The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to ask Mary to read the mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
And then next is a time for our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board on any topic that they would like. Tonight, we have three people who would like to speak before the board. I'll call them up in the order that I received them. The first one is James Lewis.
It's actually La Court.
Oh, is that what it said?
Unless that's not me, unless there's a James Lewis here.
It says James.
Oh.
Is that your real name?
That's my middle name.
Okay.
But we'll go with it.
All right. Your last name wasn't on here, so I wasn't sure if you-
My apologies.
That's all right.
My name is Jim La Court. I prepared a statement that I'll just read. I understand the protocol here. I wanted to address the board. First of all, thank you President Warren and Superintendent Langenfield for allowing us the opportunity to be able to come and speak for the board and board members. I wanted to address the board tonight regarding personal liberties travesty that has occurred this fall with the Aldo Leopold community. A total nut-related or nut-exposed products ban on all students was effectively rolled out this fall at Aldo. The very fact that our local government would impose a restrictive decision that affected everyone for the condition of several is alarming. Not to mention the method that this was rolled out. It was communicated by email. There was no public opportunity to discuss and understand the issue or give input, nor was any committee meeting or parental feedback to the restriction communication, restriction communication, which was in itself misguided and somewhat deceitful. We all love our children, and we want to protect them and see them succeed, which is why we received the initial communication of the nut ban on September 3rd, letting parents at Aldo know they could no longer use discretion on feeding their children as they felt fit and are in fact being restricted from feeding their children cold lunches that they feel are appropriate and nutritional. Felt this crossed the line of governmental control over parents in the community. The ban went as far as suggesting parents cannot even send cold lunches to school. Period. And that they have to now purchase lunches at the school that the school has. And my question was what, or go without? There was really not an alternative. The ban leaves some concerns that go far beyond the nut allergy. We have some questions that need and believe deserve answers. We are creating policies and procedures as well as safe areas for those that have allergies, but not a complete ban such as this. Some of the questions that I have would be if my child brings a peanut butter, my five-year-old little girl brings a peanut butter or jelly sandwich to school and eats one at school, or has it on her clothes, or has it on her hands, are they treated like a criminal? Are they punished for bringing a sandwich to school? Is this like bringing a knife now to school? There are two acorn trees in the playground, not to mention the many chestnut and black walnut trees in the neighborhood. Does this mean we should clear these dangerous trees from around the school and monitor all children when they come to school? Frisk our students? Make them empty their pockets? Staff the door with nut police? Confiscating anything that does not meet certain criteria? What liability does the school have to the parents with the children that have nut allergies? The school is stating they are monitoring this and taking responsibility of a nut-free environment. Is Aldo claiming they are 100% on the hook for hospital bills if someone has a reaction? And are they accountable? Should there be a slip in security for the nut products? We are heading down our, we, where we are heading with that excuse that it is in the interest of a safe environment that we are banning everything from our children that they could be injured from? Who makes these calls? Are we prepared to do away with playgrounds? Riding bikes and walking to and from school? Running on the playground? Should our children stand around staring at each other outside due to the hazards affiliated with playing at school? My initial response to this ban went out on the 4th. I included my immediate response, if anybody would like it, not completely understanding the ban, requested a meeting from Principal Trina on 9/11 to better understand the reason behind the complete ban. Trina, at the time, shared that because there were several students that had nut allergies, she and she alone was responsible for the ban of nuts at Aldo. We asked what she based her decision on. Like research, studies, community input, et cetera. She stated that it was simply her decision to be nut-free and that there was no other input to this decision. Which was not in itself reflective of the way the district has set down their policy of major changes. What we would like to see is two outcomes to this issue. Possibly three. One, we are requesting the ban be removed and a more appropriate middle-of-the-road solution be discussed and implemented. That clear procedures be developed and communicated to all district staff, addressing the steps to follow, decisions that affect more than 20% of the school's community. And the third thing was that each leader be held accountable for not following these procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next is, sorry. Ying La Court.
Yes, I am also going to be speaking in regards to the nut ban at Aldo Leopold School. Parents are becoming more and more demanding in their requests for accommodations for food allergies. It is no longer uncommon for parents to demand that life-threatening allergens be banned from an entire school, or that a one-to-one aide be assigned to their child. Given the prevalence of severe allergies among children, it is likely that most school boards will face issues related to allergies at some point. The Food Allergy and Anaphylaxis Network recommends that schools treat each student's allergy individually, rather than complete food bans. 3% to 8% of children have reactions to common foods such as milk, soy, eggs, wheat, tree nuts, fish, and shellfish. Schools cannot effectively ban all of these common foods. Although Aldo Leopold is a peanut and tree nut-free zone, as Jim stated, there are large oak trees with oak nuts in the middle of the playground. Peanut butter is banned, but alternatives that look exactly like peanut butter, such as Wow Butter and Sun Butter, are encouraged. Schneider of Hanover pretzels are banned, but rolled gold pretzels are encouraged. So how does staff differentiate one from the other? Dr. Michael Young states that peanuts and peanut butter at room temperature, although having a distinctive aroma, have no significant vapor phase containing peanut protein. It's important to educate families and schools that allergic reactions to food are immunologic responses triggered, are immunological responses to food protein allergens and not to the odors of the food themselves, which are neurological responses triggered by volatile organic compounds. These compounds, pyrazines in the case of peanuts, are not proteins and do not trigger allergic reactions. A school district is obligated to provide reasonable accommodations for disabilities of all students. So is Aldo willing to make the same accommodations for all the other food allergens? And what about a student with OCD who only eats peanut butter and jelly sandwiches on white bread with the crust removed, cut into quarters diagonally? Kids will be kids, and peanut products are bound to end up within the school at some point. So what are the legal ramifications to a severe reaction occurring in a school that has advertised itself as a completely nut-free zone? None of our area hospitals are peanut-free, and that has not impacted their ability to treat severe peanut reactions. I was a first-generation immigrant to this country and went through the Green Bay Public School system. My parents could not read or write English, or their native language among. It is both ethnocentric and unreasonable to expect that in a school district where minority students are the majority, everyone can and will follow this policy based on a letter sent home to parents. The single-page handout, which was passed out to you earlier, offers some best-practice suggestions for middle-of-the-ground management of food allergies in schools, and is endorsed by several national associations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ying. And lastly, I have Pat Schuck.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I have a concern too. It's not about what people eat. I value the work and the responsibility of every school board in Wisconsin. I think that you folks are given a tremendous charge. You're giving a lot of kids, some of whom are, and some of whom are not prepared. And now, in the last few years, in my view, you've seen the support cut financially, you've seen vouchers, you've seen a lack of support for Common Core. You've seen the extension possibly of vouchers if the current administration stays in place. So I'm very concerned about this election, and I want to obviously draw my attention to that. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards recently had a survey. They asked each candidate their opinion on a number of school-related issues. One candidate answered quite fully. The other candidate did not answer, saying that the school board group is a variation of an interest group. And I think that everyone should be insulted at that, because to me, school boards are far more than interest group. And I'd like to ask that Mike, who's familiar with this, or somebody on behalf of the school board, would make public to Green Bay voters that are, one of the candidates for governor, has said that school boards are only an interest group. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Is there any, I don't have any more forms filled out, but is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board?
Brenda, do you still have the policy that was put in when I was on the board that board members can ask straight factual-only questions? In response to something that was said at the, to ask just a factual verification question?
Sure. Yes, you may ask a factual verification question.
I guess this is probably best answered by the administration, but-
If it's an administration question, then you can't ask it. Because you can only ask it of the person speaking to clarify something that they've said.
To the first speaker, sir, are you, are you certain that all cold lunch is banned at that school? Is that what you're saying?
That was the message that came out. I have a copy of the message that was sent out via email. I'd like that copy of what it was.
And it said that cold lunch is completely banned?
It did, yes.
Okay, I'd like to see it. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll close the open forum. Next, we have roll call. Sandy?
Here.
From?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Right here?
Oh, excused, sorry.
Bledka?
Here.
Maloney?
She's excused.
Becker?
Here.
Cheng?
Here.
Ruhal?
Here. All right, we have five board members present, two excused. We're also joined by two intercity student council members. Lokin Cheng, who's the president of InterCity Student Council from Preble, and Liz Ruhal, who's from East High School. And I'm also joined to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and also Sandy Heller, our board secretary. Next, I'd like to, sorry, lost my card here. Too many papers, here we go. Next, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the following board minutes. A regular board meeting, September 22nd. Special board meetings, October 6th. Special board meeting closed sessions, September 22nd, October 6th. Public engagement session, October 13th. Is there a motion?
So move?
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is communications. We have no communications this month to be placed on file. And next, we'll move to our monitoring reports. That will be facilitated by Mike Bledka.
Thank you, Brenda. This evening, we are getting a report on one of the critical issues in public education today, the Common Core state standards. And joining us will be Mark Smith, Nancy Chartier, and Mike Freeze. So do you want to introduce things or give us a little preface of what we're going to be hearing, Mark?
Absolutely. First of all, I have to apologize. I misled the board. Mike Freeze will not be presenting tonight, unfortunately. He has a commitment out of state this evening. So Nancy Chartier, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, and myself, Assistant Superintendent, responsible for continuous school improvement, will facilitate a conversation around the Common Core state standards. We'll walk you through a prepared agenda. We're going to provide a little bit of context to the presentation so that we can frame it, both for the Board of Education, also for our listening audience at home as well. And included within that presentation, we'll move into the shift that has occurred both for, well, for our teachers and for administration relative to Common Core and its connections to other standards as well. And then we hope to wrap it up with a question-and-answer opportunity from the Board of Education. I should also note that before I get dismissed from the table, we'll also talk about learning reports versus school monitoring reports, and then have a conversation about what we'd hope to see in the school monitoring reports. So I'll make sure not to leave before that time is there. So walked you through the agenda. Just to provide a little bit of the context to the presentation, one of the things that we're very conscientious about is helping shape and make sense of the work that our staff members really have to deal with, day in and day out. And one of the things that's been a focus for us for the last several years is trying to create learning communities that are not only the sense makers for the teachers, but also have the ability to get out in front of things and to become leadership groups. And one of the things that we often focus on is four questions. And in the presentation, the four questions that we talk about are, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? Because if we can clearly articulate what we want our students to know and be able to do, we feel as if that's going to provide them really a high-quality instruction. Secondly, we'll focus on how will we know if the students have learned it? The third thing that we focus on is what are we, what are we going to do if the students don't know it? How are we going to intervene or respond? And the last thing, how will we respond if the students already know it? I bring that up because question number one, what do we want our students to know and be able to do, really leads us into the Common Core state standards. So that's part of the context for the presentation today. The other piece that I'd offer from a context standpoint is, in education today, a lot is changing, obviously. And as a matter of reflection and context setting, I offer the dates of 1998 and 2014 and the analogy of a phone. If you can think back to how the phone has evolved over that time period, I think we would all say that there's a lot that has changed in reference to that example. If you think back to personally, what you were doing in 1998 as compared to 2014, we certainly can recognize that there's a significant amount of change, both in our society, but also certainly in the world of education. So for us, in terms of the Common Core, in 1998, one of the pieces that was important is the state of Wisconsin had started to make the switch to a standards-based state. And we came out for the first time with what are referred to as, or what were referred to as, the Wisconsin academic standards. And from that time period, we started to see a movement into the exploration of a coalition of folks that came together. And Nancy's going to talk about this in a little bit. But we start to see the Common Core state standards come about in about 2008. So from 2008 to 2014, as we sit here today, it's been how do we ready ourselves, both as staff and administration, in anticipation for the implementation of standards? So that's a little bit of the context setting. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Nancy. Nancy will take us through, really, in essence, what the Common Core is and what the Common Core isn't.
Well, thanks, Mark. I'm Nancy Chartier, as Mark had mentioned, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, and thank you for the invitation to speak with you tonight. A little bit about the Common Core. They were not developed in a vacuum, but rather they were developed amongst states by two very collaborative groups, the National Governors Associations, along with the Council of Certified School Officials. Forty-three states have adopted the standards. The Chief Board of, the College Board, NACT Board, all support the Common Core standards. To date, this is a map, a most current map, of the schools, or the states, who have adopted the Common Core state standards. They're, the state of Minnesota adopted the Common Core English Language Arts standards, but not the math standards. In that particular state, they had a very aggressive project in place that really had set really rigorous standards in the area of mathematics, and therefore did not adopt the mathematics standards. All other states in the lime green have adopted the Common Core state standards. So why Common Core state standards? As we look at this previous state, if, if I were to move from the state of wonderful state of Wisconsin back to my home state of Michigan and bring my grandchildren with me, I would, I would know that my grandchildren would receive the same set of standards, whether they were in the state of Wisconsin or the state of Michigan. So they really do provide for us, they provide for us clarity. So no matter where they live, the students are coherent, and they will be receiving the same set of standards. The standards also prepare us for not only college and career readiness, but they also prepare us for life. And they are set to help prepare students to be competitive for the skills and with the skills and knowledge needed to be successful. The competition for global competitiveness, they are benchmarked against the national norms, but also international norms. And equity, regardless, as I was mentioning with my grandchildren, across the zip code, all children are held to the same set of standards. They're focused, they're very clear, they're coherent. And the parents, children, staff, all know what is expected of children. And the wonderful piece about the Common Core standards is because of their diversity, they do allow for major collaboration amongst not only school districts, but in different states, for teachers to actually build, build groups of teachers where they can actually speak amongst each other and to share resources to help children to better understand the complexity of the standards. Now, a little bit of the difference, if you don't mind, would be between the Common Core state standards and the Wisconsin modeled academic standards. In sixth grade, for instance, the eighth standard that is currently addressed in the Common Core state standards was not even a part of the standards that students were measured against. So there were, there were no standards. But in eighth grade, they have to trace and evaluate an argument and specific claims and attacks distinguishing the claims that are supported by reasons and evidence from the claims that are not. Previous to the Common Core state standards, this was not addressed at the sixth grade level. If we take a closer look at the eighth grade expectation under the Wisconsin academic model standards, evaluate the themes, main ideas, and work to consider, and considering its audience and purpose, was extremely vague. When we look at the more specific standard under the Common Core that aligns with it, it determines, the students are asked to determine a central idea of the text and analyze and develop it over the course of the text, including its relationship to supporting ideas, and provide objective summary of the text. So it's explicitly clear that the interpretations prior to these standards had many interpretations, where the Common Core is very explicitly clear. This is actually the 10th standard in what we call anchor standards. And for reading and writing, speaking, listening, and language, there are 10 what we call anchor standards that all students must meet. And then what, at every grade level, there's a specific breakdown of those standards. And later in my presentation, I'll be alluding to one of those. But this is the first set of standards that truly calls out that all children will be reading at grade level, by the end of grade level, in holding children to that higher degree of text complexity. And that is one of the shifts between the two standards, is the fact that there is regular practice with a complex text in academic language that becomes and builds upon each other throughout the grade levels. As I mentioned before, there are 10 college and career-ready anchor standards. Regardless if your children are in kindergarten or 12th grade, they are held against these 10 standards. The one that I'm going to pay closer attention to today, to break down the specific standards at specific grade levels, would be to read closely. It's found under your key ideas and details, and it is a skill that we want students to obtain as they move through school. At the kindergarten level, the kindergarten children will be held to this standard under read closely, with prompt and support to ask and answer questions about key ideas and details. And as you can see, as they progress through the years in school, that particular standard begins to build upon itself with more complexity. Ask-and-answer questions about key details in a text would be grade one. But let's jump down to grade four. Refer to details and examples in a text when explaining what the text says explicitly, and then drawing inferences from the text. So you can see the jump from kindergarten through grade four. And holding in mind what kindergarten is with prompting and support, let's jump to what their expectations of a high school graduate under the same standard would be. Anchor standard, that is, excuse me. Apply the understanding and usage is a matter of convention and can change over time and is sometimes contested. All of those skills leading to your 12th grade graduation anchor skill would be what separates the Common Core standards from what was once the Wisconsin model standards. There are also 10 anchor standards, for which each of these anchor standards in writing have also specific grade-level expectations. Because of our time tonight, I'm going to bear you the, the privilege of not sitting through each of these specific standards for each grade level, just knowing that there are 10 writing standards that each child is measured against at specific, with specific grade-level standards under each of those. And also, the state of Wisconsin has identified the seven characteristics of, characteristics of a proficient, literate student in language, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We often spend a lot of attention honing in on the Common Core around reading and writing, the reading and writing standards, but keeping in mind, there are also Common Core English Language Arts standards are made up of language, listening, and speaking. The students in the state of Wisconsin are called out to demonstrate independence, to build strong content and knowledge, to respond to varied demands of audience, task, purpose, and discipline, comprehend as well as critique, to value evidence, to use technology and digital media strategically and capably, and come to understand the perspectives of various cultures. Now moving to mathematics, the mathematics Common Core standards, very similar. Although developed by a whole different and independent group of authors, the mathematics standards really have two sets of standards that run through and really braid together. They have the mathematical concept standards, and they also have the mathematical practice standards. And hopefully tonight, I can, to demonstrate how both sets of standards are actually interwoven and braided together, which really separate a new set of standards from doing business the old way. So for instance, in third grade, prior to the Common Core state standards, the use of multiplication, division, and 100 to solve word problems and situations did not exist. Much like in fourth grade, the vagueness of what they're asking fourth graders to do to represent the whole numbers in decimals and fractions with physical materials and number lines and other pictorial models, they become very- number lines and other pictorial models, they become very explicitly clear under the Common Core standards what they want students to know and be able to do with fractions.
Nancy, can I just interrupt you there? Would you, okay, would you talk a little bit about, okay, before the Common Core State Standards, let's take fourth grade, would that then be up to individual teachers to interpret what they needed, what their students needed to learn?
That is exactly correct. They're written vaguely, and I might mention, and thank you, that they're written in band standards. So it'd be from kindergarten to fourth grade, teachers in independent districts would determine if that would even be a fourth grade standard.
Okay.
Okay? But what we did know is that that standard had to be met, or was expected to have been met, by the end of fourth grade. They did not hold districts back from teaching it at the third grade level.
Okay.
And then, did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay. And then the next piece would be the correlation between the exact same task that they were asking for outcome, but look at the difference in complexity under the Common Core. I can extrapolate two of the practice, mathematical practice skills right out of there with using models and fraction models to demonstrate, and also to use the principle itself to recognize. The mathematical practice standards truly bring the concept standards to life. Students not only need to know conceptually what the standards are asking, but they must be able to explain, they must be able to model, they must be able to see how what's being asked in mathematics applies across multiple content areas. And listed on the PowerPoint here are your eight mathematical practices.
If I could just quickly interject, I think this is one of the things, as we talk to folks out in the community, this is one that they really, they understand. When we're trying to build students to be well-rounded, ready for the community, and we can get two pieces around transference and in leadership and responsibility, there's a lot of this belief that it's not only about what you know, but what you're able to do. How do you transfer that information and apply it? So I think that's just another example of what we see as the Common Core, in terms of an advantage of the Common Core, being able to do.
And if I could add to that, too, just the whole piece of students being able to articulate and explain. Math, for many, was an opportunity to memorize, and if you were an excellent memorizer of all the formulas, you could do math. If you knew the sequencing and orders of operations, you could do math, but you may not have any concept of what it really means that you're doing. And you could be a fairly good student just by memorizing algorithms and being able to just give it back. But this is why, I think, sometimes when we talk with people in the community or families, we're teaching a little bit differently than many of us learn. And it creates a more challenging support for parents, because obviously, we want our children to do well in mathematics. So that's where I see some disconnect, that we can help parents, and I know there's many, many wonderful resources now online that didn't exist when my kids were going through high school and so forth. So it's good stuff.
A few more slides, and I think that's a nice conversation that we can share about, both from the teacher's perspective as well, because with the shift to Common Core, there's shifts in practices from curriculum renewal standpoint, from a building-level teacher-practitioner view, and then certainly with parents and students and how they're coming around and what supports that we have in place for them as well.
And one piece to really bring at home in mathematics, third grade, we ask prior to third grade and into third grade that we are not working with algorithms with the children, so that they have a deeper sense of what mathematics is. They have to, much like not only what you do with math, but to internalize it, to talk about it, to be able to explain exactly what's going on in their equations. The minute that they get their, the minute they are given a formula, then math becomes that memorization. And it's very difficult to go back and to teach early numeracy prior, if that's taught out of progression. Any other questions on the mathematical practice standards? You all bring up excellent points of the differences.
One of the things, Nancy, one of the criticisms or concerns that you read about from parents and others about the new math standards is that math is being taught differently today than when many parents were in school, and they struggle to help their children with their math homework. How are teachers addressing that with parents?
I would say that the staff that we work with are sending home homework for mathematics that children need reinforcement in. Parents should not be the first teacher of any skill taught, but they should be reinforcing what has already been taught in school. I know that we have messaged out algorithms, and we've messaged out what to teach at what grade levels and what those expectations at particular grade levels might be. I would say that children and parents playing games, talking about numbers, the questioning that parents would use even at the dinner table, if we had one more guest, how many more would we have at the dinner table? In our Content Essential Documents, which we'll get to in a future presentation, we actually have relevance that we build into those essential documents so that parents can reference them to better help meet their children's needs at.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions on the math? Okay.
Now, what the Common Core State Standards are not, is they do not tell us how to teach. They do not describe all that can be taught. They define the nature, and they do not define the nature of advanced work for students who meet the standards, nor do they define the interventions that are needed for those who fall below grade level expectation. And they also do not define the full range of support for appropriate English Language Arts students, I'm sorry, for English learners or students with special needs. And the Common Core does not define the whole career and college readiness. That is the responsibility of a district. This Common Core are not the curriculum, they are the floor, they are the foundation from which we build our curriculum upon. Now, what other standards are new? The one concept that we often overlook is the fact that since the adoption of the Common Core standards, they have been infused in all the new standards that have been written, in the Wisconsin Standards for Career and Technical Education, for the National Corps of Art Standards, the Next Generation Science Standards, the English Language Arts and Mathematical Standards are infused throughout those new standards written. So when we hear rumors of getting rid of the Common Core standards, you would not just be getting rid of the Common Core standards. It would be a thorough examination of all standards that have been written since the Common Core standards, as they are infused in all of the new standards that have been written ever since. A great example would be the Next Generation Science Standards, as you'll see that the connection boxes below clearly call out the English Language Arts standards that align to them, and also the mathematical standards that align to them. They're embedded within all of the new standards, along with the Career and Technical Standards, and these other plus-career practices that are embedded within the Wisconsin Common Career Technical Standards. All are infused with the reading and the writing expectations in the Common Core standards.
We think that that last few slides is important, because we want, certainly the Board of Education, but also all other folks to understand that there really is a deliberate and focused attempt at the integration of the standards. It's important for us also, then, to be able to build units of study and to be able to provide professional learning for our teachers, so that they see that connection as well. In summary, really, we work hard, both administratively and teachers, to make sense of the changing world of education that's before us. And one of the things that we keep going back to is how do schools function as learning communities? And the last slide is just really that re-emphasis around, if we can stay focused on the critical questions, we can really start to bridge that connection for staff. The question, as we mentioned earlier to start the presentation, was what do we want our students to know and be able to do? And as you think about that, that's really the focus on the standards, whether it's the Common Core, Wisconsin Academic Model Standards, the Career and Technological Standards, Next Generation Science Standards, whatever standards that might be, that really allows us to clearly communicate what it is that we're asking our students to know and be able to do. Additionally, how will we know is our focus on assessment, and is around the role of grading practices. Nancy alluded to the role of homework. That's one of the things that we're working on as a district, is to truly identify what role does homework play, so that the students understand the role, and also the parents understand how to come alongside and support their son or daughter. Also, when we look at the question, how will we respond if students don't learn it? What are we doing from an intervention standpoint or a differentiation standpoint, real-time within the classroom, or providing some additional support for those students that are struggling learners? And then lastly, how will we know if students have already learned it? What are we doing about that? That's really where we get to that enrichment opportunity as well. So what we hope to do is paint a little bit of a picture today around Common Core, what it is, what it isn't, some of how we started to, started to and continue to make sense of the Common Core and its interconnection to other academic standards that are before us as well. Certainly recognize that it's a process. We're attempting daily to build capacity and focus in our district, and by no stretch does this presentation mean that we have it all figured out. It's a process that we're going through and going to continue to work with our teachers to build their capacity, and certainly our principals as well. The other piece that was one of our outcomes for today's presentation is, and to continue to do that throughout the year, is to provide you some background knowledge around the daily work that has to go into implementing school improvement plans at the building level. So each of the grade-level teams or content-level teams are working to implement their curriculum, and key to that certainly is standards. So we'll continue to bring you presentations throughout the year, this is one of many that's before us. We turn it over to the board, if you have any questions or conversations you'd like to engage in around specifically the Common Core, Nancy and I'd be more than happy to entertain those questions.
Let's first focus on the Common Core before we go into the learning reports versus monitoring reports. Questions from fellow board members? I've got maybe, I don't know, a question, but some comments on, I think the community is probably confused, at least some people in the community, about what's going to happen to the Common Core, especially, you know, several months ago, the governor said, well, the legislature should repeal the Common Core when it goes back into session in January, even though school districts are well into implementing the Common Core. But I think legislators in both parties have questioned whether there is really anything to repeal. A local Republican legislator said something to me last week, he said, there's nothing to repeal, it's not a law, it's not legislation, it's basically an administrative rule from the Department of Public Instruction. So whether there's a political push to get rid of the Common Core, I don't think that's going to happen. So I think those in the community that wonder about, well, what's going to happen in January, February, it's a legislature votes, really, I think, not a lot. And I'd like to make another point, that I think support for the Common Core is strong throughout Wisconsin. There have been some comments that, well, there are some conservative districts, and do they want to get rid of it? At WSB's Delegate Assembly last January, which is WSB's legislative body, every school district in the state has the opportunity to have a delegate present, and a Policy Resolutions Committee advances resolutions to Delegate Assembly, and if those resolutions are adopted, that gives our lobbyists direction when they go to, when they go across the street to the Capitol. There was a resolution introduced last January endorsing the Common Core, and out of about 320 delegates at the Delegate Assembly, there were 30 to 35 no votes. So it passed overwhelmingly. And in that resolution, that resolution also said that endorsing the Common Core does not take the freedom or responsibility away from local school districts to develop their own curriculum. So that is the official position of the WSB, and so I think the Common Core will proceed in almost all school districts unless an individual district decides they want to go in another direction, which they're free to do. But the new testing is aligned with the Common Core, so I think if you go away from the Common Core, I think you could be running into some difficulty. So thank you for that presentation, and I think our community needs to be much more educated, and this is a good start. Thanks. Michelle?
Yeah, I just have a question, and I'm going to put Nancy on the spot here. Can you speak, I appreciated the conversation, and I think that, again, there are a lot of people who have a lot of misinformation. Can you speak to why the Common Core, moving with the set of standards, is the right thing for the children in the Green Bay area public schools?
Absolutely. Do you have about an hour and a half?
No, no, but I just thought it would be a nice way to close.
Professionally, I believe, thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. Professionally, I believe sticking with the Common Core clearly defines for our parents and our children, shall I say, the baseline of expectations that all children should be held to as they progress through the district. It also allows for us as a district to add to the Common Core, to enrich them with even more rigor, but also gives us the flexibility to use multiple standards, across multiple standards, to write interdisciplinary units of study, so that children can connect to the known across other content areas and make school real to them, shall I say. And so, in my professional opinion, it really does align a district and help align a district in a very rigorous manner through the complexity of learning, and outlines exactly where we should hold our children to.
Anything else? Nancy, thank you so much. And Mark, you've got another responsibility.
Yeah, Nancy can be this way. Thank you. Would you like to start? Would you like me to start?
Yeah, we have, so what we've talked about, Mark and Mike and I, is to redo, rethink the monitoring reports that we have. So we have a list of topics, which of course I did not bring with me, a list of topics which includes the Common Core. It also includes, at the end of the year, not the DaVinci School, but other, what are we doing for gifted students, gifted and hopefully talented students as well, in the district? And then, because the state, the school monitoring reports are really focused on what the data says from the testing that we'll do, which doesn't, we don't get until the end of the year, we'd like to have the school monitoring reports actually in the summertime. So, but of course, we want to, this is not the Kingdom of Celestine, sadly, or Mike, or Mark. So we wanted to bring to you an idea, a list of topics, to see if you wanted to actually change the way that we do this, that we think would make more sense. And what actually, I think, for a very interesting time period for this 14, 15 school year, gave us the opportunity to look at some ways that we do things, response to intervention would be one of those things, special education is another, really digging into some of the, essentially, some of our core functions, and then, as I said, saving the school monitoring reports to the summer.
And I guess one other thing I would add in our discussion is that we felt that it isn't necessarily necessary to hit every school every year. I think, and as Celestine said, I think we would do some natural groupings. Sage is a possible grouping, the dual-language immersion schools is another grouping, to look at it that way, so you don't have to go step by step and necessarily do every school every year. So I think that was another thought that we had.
That matches with my thinking. The other piece I would just add, for discussion purposes, in my mind, I kind of framed up two different types of reports, a learning report that's less focused on a building, like you saw today, it's more of a learning initiative, a bigger-picture type of concept, Common Core, smarter balance, response to intervention, those are a few that we brainstormed. And then all of those would kind of lead us into a deeper-level understanding of school monitoring reports, that then bring in the building-level perspective, providing you and the public a bit more of a background around how are they implementing Common Core, what are the things that they see at the building level? And then how we group it, how we organize it, really is within what I think are some really opportunistic themes. really opportunistic themes that we could also pull out. So, two things, from my standpoint, administrative standpoint would be, does that match your understanding and are there learning reports of particular topics that you would want to funnel my way? And then the other part would be, is that if we could have a little bit of conversation around what it is that you'd like to see in the school monitoring reports. We've talked about insight statements and my sense is that we want to hold on to that element of it because it provides that reflective practitioner's view. It's an honest, transparent response to where their current reality is. Certainly, there's a focus on what the goals are and what their results are as well that we want to see. That would be the other piece that would be helpful if there were some other insights, no pun intended, sorry, towards what would be involved in that school monitoring report.
Comments by other board members?
Yeah. So, as we said, you know, different topics for the academic year and then toward the summer, school monitoring reports and what you'd like to see in them.
Brenda?
Would some of the reports throughout the year be data report, I mean, based on, instead of, you know, like today was learning about Common Core, there isn't a whole lot of data to come with it. But I would see, I would think that some of the learning reports that we have.
Like special education, like response to intervention.
Depending on the, you know, the angle that we look at it, there would be data that would come along with it.
Well, let's flesh out a little bit more what kind of data you'd like to see. I mean, not specific numbers, but what would you hope the data would tell you about a topic like gifted learning or learning for talented students? Or response to intervention, which we've talked about in the past.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is I don't want to create a presentation that has to create data.
Sure.
Do you know what I mean? I mean, I don't want to just say, "Oh, I need this data and it's not been collected and it requires a huge amount of work just for our board presentation."
And I think that's important for staff to let us know, saying, "We can't do that by next month." I mean, I think that's what you need to tell us, Mark.
And I think maybe, and we don't have to have it all figured out tonight because that's understandable, but if there are topics that are of genuine interest of the board from a learning standpoint, then we can look at, from an operational standpoint, what where, what sources of data, you know, are present. You know, they might be more organizational data or there may be some student achievement data that's associated with that. So, we would certainly be able to respond to that based upon a topic.
And I'm just, this is just off the top of my head thinking, but I would think we could do what we're doing now and say, "Next month is, this is the topic." And that would be a chance for, and you could give a little, you know, Cliff Notes version of, "This is what we're going to present." And then is there anything the board specifically wants to hear about or is there any data that you would like us to bring? You know, that kind of thing. Because right, sitting right here, I'm not coming up with specifics. I would just, when you say topics, then I think, "Oh, it would be interesting to know this or that," or, you know, those kinds of things, but.
And we generated a list of kind of learning focus concepts early on and I mentioned a few of them, but Common Core, smarter balance is present and I think that would be a good one to share, you know.
Especially following the Common Core. I mean, to me, that's logical for that to follow the Common Core presentation.
And the role that technology plays in that as well. I'm sure Diane would love that opportunity again to partner with me. So, you know, the other piece we've talked about at the table is the curriculum process. One of the things about knowing the Common Core, but how do you do the work and make sense of what standards are, the essential standards, a curriculum process and where we're going with curriculum as an update would be, I believe, timely. Additionally, response to intervention is, was another one and that might dovetail into some other topics potentially in terms of programs, interventions. All of those are things that could certainly lend itself.
And one of the reasons why, Mark had mentioned that school monitoring reports would be late spring, early summer, because in the past year, the schools that gave the report in fall and winter were at a disadvantage to the schools who reported later, who had more data by the end of the school year. So, that's a reason why we're pushing that. And one of the things that I felt from last year, and this is just my opinion, is that I thought our reports last year were very staff focused and I think they need to be more student focused. There was a lot of stuff about posting learning targets and what staff is doing and what staff is expected to do. So, now I think we need to take, "All right, how is that impacting student learning?" And I thought the best report of the year was the last one we got from West High School because there's a lot of student data in that West High School report and I think that's where I would like to see us move.
Are there other insights like that? That's helpful because then we can start looking at what are those data sets that are available and accessible.
And as we think about the board's strategic directions, and you've laid out five strategic directions, within those directions are the pieces that we should be, I think, you know, and what we heard tonight certainly aligns with high standards that lead to excellence. That's one of the standards. I'm thinking that as you reflect to see, that might be something the board could go back and look at and say, "Okay, you know, one of the pieces goes right back to the gifted and talented. What are the pathways that we are defining for our students and how are they resulting in success for each and every student?" That might be one to consider. And then the GT fits right in there. What are the, what are the ongoing ways that we're intervening toward academic excellence? What are the meaningful connections that we're setting up with students and staff and families and community that are supporting student achievement and student learning? So, maybe if, as, that might be just a way to frame, to look through each of those strategic lenses and say, you know, "These are district priorities. It's defined by the Board of Education and the direction." And then you can, you would have those measures because that's, you know, we're looking at that, you know, as a cabinet. This is work we're doing internally as well to make sure, you know, and working on the metrics. Because what we're finding is there are metrics that we don't necessarily have, that we need to have, which feeds right into what does the board want to see in the data dashboard.
Well, and then that also informs, you know, at the end of the school year and then even next academic year, that informs what the schools would be looking at as well in terms of their own data for, about their own professional learning communities, but then also, as you said, Mike, the data about the students. And I think that as we go, as we move through this, I think that, you know, the three of us will meet regularly so that we can also just think about some essential data questions that might, we might want to put out to our preamble, our pre-Cliff Notes version, as Brenda says, "Okay, so next board meeting, we're going to talk about response to intervention. You know, perhaps here are some essential questions we need to ask, like how many years students are in these programs? What does it look like when they leave the program? Can we get the data around that and any other, you know, discussion points?" I think, I think that in the time that we've been meeting, I think that this is a very good move for the board, in my opinion, because I really think that it gives us the opportunity to talk about the things that we actually do and to, and to lead us, lead us forward and lead us back to where we started, which is what you said, Michelle, which is our strategic direction.
All right. If anybody has any thoughts to the whole process, you can email the three of us and we'll bring it to the table.
Right. Did we include a parent piece in that? I can't recall. Parent, parent, parent connections is on that list.
Well, strategic directions, family, parent engagement piece on the monitoring report.
But, yeah, the list that we.
No, we, yeah, I think we do. I don't have the list in front of me, but I recall that conversation.
If, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think our list is good, but if not, then I would want to do that next fall.
So, we're ready for smarter balance presentation and we'll give you the, what it is, what it isn't, no. We'll tell you what really is in store for us and how we've readied and prepared. And if you have any specific, you know, kind of request as far as what would be included for that, certainly let me know that and we can get prepared. And then as we think about some of the intervention pieces, if that comes in, you know, December, if you have insights on that, the sooner that we know about what it is, the easier it would be to start collecting the data. And I can start thinking about that as well with our team around what are some of those data sets that you might want to see.
Good. Brenda?
Interventions is a gigantic topic.
Yes.
So, would we parse it into, like, in subcategories?
Yeah, I think so.
You know, so that we're not trying to cover the entire world in one meeting.
Yeah.
But I mean, I.
As I said, I'm trying to wrap my head around what would make sense and what are some of the things that are.
Because we have math.
That we're working on that would, would fall into that category, that would be timely as, you know, as we continue to do our work around literacy or around math.
Right. Attendance and, you know, engagement, the graduation. We've got all sorts of things going on in our schools and it would be nice, I think, to have, to not try to do interventions all in one meeting, but to have, you know, academic achievement interventions or, you know, whatever logical way of dividing those into maybe two or three presentations.
And I think we were, I don't know, when I looked at that list, I was really thinking about academic interventions, not behavioral ones, because we have those two task forces going that are working on. Although you're right, I mean.
I mean, it would be at some point interesting to hear the behavioral interventions with the task forces, how they do work and things.
Oh, go ahead.
And then for smarter balance, are you going to include, I mean, does, does the ACT test count as part of smarter balance? Are you going to include all of the testing that we're now doing that's different from what we used to do?
We didn't in our previous presentations to the community. It was focused solely on smarter balance as aligned to Common Core, but the ACT test suite is, it's new as well. And it falls under that second question of how will we know if the students have learned it? So, yeah.
I would be interested in just hearing, because I'm not sure I quite understand the suite and what it's given and.
And that might, we might need to do too. You know, because we don't want to.
Because, you know, in my mind, the ACT is the sibling of the SAT and these are, I mean, whether or not we use them for our own information, these are tests that are pointed toward post-graduation as well as the AP test, as well as IB. So, I mean, I think smarter balance kind of deserves its own day in.
And it's big enough too. I mean, there's enough, you know.
I mean, those other tests are.
But I think that that's a good one because that is new and there's shifts from an implementation standpoint. We're dependent upon some technology pieces and we've learned some, some pieces there in that process as well. So, it's a good topic. I think I got what I needed.
Yeah.
Very helpful. I appreciate that and it provides us a direction in getting prepared for the future months.
And we're doing one more month, next month for Common Core, right?
Oh, smarter balance.
Oh, we're doing smarter balance next month.
Smarter balance, yep.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you, Mark.
If you have any questions, let us know.
Thank you.
I was going to say comments.
Sure, comments. All right. That concludes our report.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Next we'll move to our superintendent update.
Very good. I'm going to start with a calendar. It's very short. We actually have one more budget hearing that's not up here. Can I just? Yeah. Yeah, and I want to just make sure that people are aware and that would be next Monday, right? Beginning at what time? 5:30 here in the boardroom. So, it's our last public engagement session and then the board will take a vote on the budget for the 13, 15 school year. And I wanted to make sure the public was aware of that.
Will we have third Friday figures by that time? Ellen?
Yes. He says yes, so yes.
All right, good.
I thought, all right, very good. As far as the November calendar, looking ahead, which is just right around the corner, it's November already, we have our work session right here in the board meeting on November 3rd, beginning at 5:30, followed by the organizational support work session. And our regular board meeting is November 17th. And also, if you look, the district will be in recess on the 27th and 28th with the schools and district office closed already for Thanksgiving.
And there is no elementary on the 26th, correct?
I think there's no school.
No school for elementary on the 26th.
Anyway, so it's a, it's a very short calendar for November, but I think there's, if you're playing along, there's a lot of things happening in our schools and I think we'll hear a little more about that coming up because I know the musicals are coming and everything else and playoffs and all sorts of exciting things. So, so that's the calendar. I do have two discussion items. The first one is scheduling a retreat again and I'm wondering, do we want to do that here as at the best since a couple of board members are not here?
We've talked to both.
We've talked to.
Okay, so.
November 10th is the possible date?
I'm looking.
What time, Sandy? Do the others have any? Do the others have any?
Five, 5:30.
We haven't set. I mean, no, the time is, can be flexible.
Five, 5:30.
Can you come? I can't come before 6, but start when you want. I am in the class until almost 6.
I don't know. Actually, you know, I realize that there's something, that's why I'm not going to be here on the 17th because I have a training and I'm not sure if it's on the 10th. So, I have to look at that. It's not on my calendar yet. I'm not sure.
And it would be evening?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Schedule it. Yeah, schedule it and if I can come, I can, if I can.
Is 6:00 okay with everybody? I mean, I'm looking at you with your staff.
You know, we work when people can come, so it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, sure. Yeah, no, we want people to be here.
Yeah. So, why don't we, why don't we say 6:00 then and then we'll give Mary a chance to be here.
Yeah, I would, I think it's important, so, yeah.
Rather than coming super late, so.
Okay. And again, I think we can frame some things and if we need more time, you know, we need people's energy. So, thank you. That sounds good. And so, Sandy, you'll send that out to people and let them know. Very good. And the next thing I have is just, I just wanted to do one more wrap-up on BayLink Manufacturing. That's my success story. When I think about the vision and the mission the board has set out to be college, career and community ready, every child, every day, when you speak to the students who are participating in BayLink Manufacturing and you look at the college career part, you really start to recognize that it is truly transformational for those students in particular who are participating in the program. And I, I was able to, if you read the quotes in the newspaper from the various students that were interviewed, you can clearly see it is transformational and changing their lives. So, I think that's one piece. And in my conversations with people that day at the celebration last week at West High School where BayLink is, is the new home, one of the things that was really apparent to me that wasn't, isn't always the case with partnerships, is there are a lot of higher education partnerships with school districts right now, but the uniqueness is the fact that in this particular partnership and in many of our partnerships for customized pathways, we have a community that is partnering and providing in-kind time, resource and financial support that has helped to make it a reality for our kids. You see this with the New Manufacturing Alliance, a partnership with N W T C and the school district, and you also see it with many of our others, you know, East Fine Arts is a great example and many, many more, where we have the community in partnership with the school district and higher education. And I think that the comment with that is that the future, the future of public education is transforming here in northeast Wisconsin and more specifically in the Green Bay area public schools. And as we continue down that path, I think I personally wanted the Board of Education for your vision of the importance of customizing educational pathways for kids, recognizing that, that there isn't just one way and when we work collectively together with our community and partnership and our higher education institutions, we can achieve some pretty extraordinary things for the students and families we're serving. So, I thank you for that and I just want, it truly was a day to celebrate and I think we've had many opportunities where we've celebrated it as well, where we're really changing, in this particular case, a really skilled workforce of students, so.
And I guess I would just add that the two West Student Tour guys were very articulate in stating how important that program was and how it was helping them make some decisions in their life, so that I thought they did an excellent job. So, I thought they did an excellent job.
And I think our community partners really see the value in the work that we're doing. And that was repeatedly stated by many, so, it was a great day to celebrate. And we have more to come. So, thank you. And I think I have no discussion items or action items, so we're good to go.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our legal update. I'll call Melissa to the table.
Good evening.
Evening.
This month's legal update was with respect to board policy, its importance, its requirements from the law, and what the district does to implement and review district policy. As you know, it's been in priority of this board and of the administration to continue to work and complete our district policies, as well as revise and refine the policies that exist. And as the state legislative landscape continues to change, we continue to be required to update and monitor those policies. So, with that, did you have any questions regarding the legal update? I appreciate you going easy on me. Oh, my!
At one time, we were going through the different series. And are we through the review of all existing policies?
We are not.
Okay.
We continue, we will be bringing forward the policies that have not yet been reviewed and completed, but they are in stages of being completed and you should have them throughout the course of the school year.
Can you tell us what sections we have yet to go? I know we've done the bulk of the academic ones, which was the huge one.
Series 600, 700, 900. And we need to go back and Jean's department has been working hard on the 500 series, which is the human resources and personnel series.
All right, thank you.
Just a question, though, there aren't as many policies in those series.
There are not as many policies in those.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Far fewer.
Far fewer. And we do have the, we do have a number of them completed in those series that I identified. They're just not all there from the old policies. Is that correct, Sandy?
So, do we have a bunch of policies under the old letter? I mean, do we have some policies in effect under the old letter codes until they're replaced by board votes?
That's correct.
So, it's theoretically possible that something that's number sequence now could in some way be contradictory with something that's not been converted yet?
No, if a policy was in the letter series, it's been repealed by the adoption of the numbered series.
Okay.
So, in other words, these sections where you have some policies done and some not, you have the numbered ones, the old policy's been repealed, but then there are still old policies under the letter system in that section.
Correct. We have a crosswalk of the numbered policies and the lettered policies. And where the numbered policies have been adopted by the board, those letter policies have been repealed.
Yeah, okay. And then, are, the ones that are online now, are those only the numbered policies?
That's correct.
So, the, so that if someone were to go online looking for an old policy, it wouldn't be online yet, because it hasn't been updated?
Correct.
Okay. And then, what's the, I know we update policies periodically because of changes in legislation and things that come up in our district. But if a policy just sits there and doesn't need any attention, what's the recommended look time that the board should relook at a policy to make sure it's still up to date and things like that?
The recommended look time is every two years. And we are going, now that I have assistance with Ellen, we are going to get our policies inventoried and we're going to have them on a two-year review cycle. Once we get those done.
So, then, are we looking at them every two years? You bring them?
That will need to determine with the board, how we're going to do that.
Okay, okay. And we'll determine that at some point when we get to that point.
When we get there. A step at a time. I think we've made great progress. I want to thank my colleagues as well, because they've been working very hard in getting the policies done.
Any other questions? Right, Melissa. And then, next, we have, the computer will collaborate, the InterCity Student Council report.
All right, thank you. For high school news, Preble graduate Joey Bina receives a role on the ABC show, The Middle. Preble, the anti-boeing 5K run, the first annual for Preble took place on the 11th, two weeks ago, on Saturday. Preble student Maddie Numai wins her third straight regional title in golf. And on October 11th, the Green Bay area public school held their marching band showcase at East High School and the State Stadium. And East wins their regional title over Southwest in soccer. For Southwest, Southwest defeats Wes 34 to 13 and will secure a playoff spot with another win this week. Annalee Sack was featured on the Green Bay Prescott Senior Spotlight for her achievement in singles panels. And for Wes, it was discussed earlier, they had their BayLink Manufacturing brand opening. And for upcoming events, Preble, their musical Seven Brides for Seven Brothers is going to be held on the November 14th, 15th, 21st, and 22nd at 7:00 PM. And East volleyball is going to play against the Pure on Thursday for the regional title. That concludes the InterCity Student Council report.
All right, thank you. And next, we have our Legislative Liaison Report. That would be Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. The first item, WSB has contacted Sandy and asked, we need to tell them who our delegate and alternate is. The last several years, Chris has done that and he is not here. Sandy, do you want to email Chris and ask him if he would do? I think he's expressed an interest in doing it again, but we should, we should ask him before we send his name in.
I would agree.
And then, we also have an alternate. Do you remember who the alternate was last year? Was it Katie? I think it was Katie. And she also isn't here.
Yeah.
Point to two people who weren't here. And that, you also want to maybe let, email her and ask her if she would be the alternate?
Otherwise, I was just going to say, do we want to have? Because when do you have to have that in?
Did they give you a deadline?
They emailed me again.
Oh.
It must be one again.
Okay. All right, Chris is... Okay. What happens if we put a name in and then we change it?
You can always, I mean, school districts do that. I think we just maybe gave them last year's names and we can always change it. I know some school district, somebody gets sick or something and they don't show up and they, they're not denied a spot at the delegate assembly. Have to change it.
Because I'm planning on going to the conference, so, I mean, I could also, you know, if Katie or Chris can't be on that list, I could do it.
And then, the second Sandy would like to know from board members, as soon as possible, if you are going and how many nights you're staying, because the downtown hotels fell up in a hurry. I think last year, you had a split board members of a couple of different hotels, because we didn't get our...
Last year, I couldn't get the Hampton.
Yeah.
We were too late, so...
We like that, so...
We like the Hampton.
Well, it's very handy, just a couple blocks away.
It's a bluster instead of...
We'd cross the river in the rain and ice up a hill and it was Harold.
And it's always the coldest week of the year.
It is.
It was windy. Yeah, it was, it was quite the walk. It was not that far, but... All right. So, get that to Sandy soon, all right? And then, also, it would help, I think, if you're not going, to let her know that, too. Then she doesn't have to try to find you and double-check and things like that.
And that is January 21st to the 23rd. Although, on the 20th, there are some pre-conference sessions. And sometimes people are interested in that as well.
Did we get that yet? What the pre-conference sessions are?
I don't know.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it, yeah. Okay. But the Hampton, we can add nights.
If there's room.
Yeah, but I mean, if we take the, you know, the common night and then add Tuesday, we can probably do that if we decide later.
All right, second, there are a couple of voucher-related topics that I wanted to share with the board. The Wisconsin State Journal, which is Madison's daily newspaper, did a review of vouchers and voucher payments. And I will just read you a portion of what they found. Over the past 10 years, Wisconsin taxpayers have paid about $139 million to private schools that were subsequently barred from the state's voucher system for failing to meet requirements related to finances, accreditation, student safety, and auditing. More than two-thirds of the 50 schools terminated from the state's voucher system since 2004, all of them in Milwaukee, had stayed open for five years or less, according to the data provided by the State Department of Public Instruction. Eleven schools paid a total of $4.1 million were terminated from the voucher program after just one year. Northside High School, for example, received $1.7 million in state vouchers for low-income students attending the private school before being terminated from the program in its first year in 2006 for failing to provide an adequate curriculum. The data highlights the challenges the state faces in requiring accountability from private schools in the voucher program, which expanded from just Milwaukee and Racine to a statewide program last year. Last school year, there were 108 schools and about 25,000 students participating in the Milwaukee voucher program and 146 voucher schools total. State has budgeted about $210 million for all voucher schools in the current school year. Of the schools that have been terminated from the program, a handful are also on the State Department of Revenue's delinquent taxpayers list for not repaying overpayments from the state based on enrollment projections that turned out to be too high. In all, those schools owe $253,000. But recouping money sent to shuttered schools isn't feasible option, since the money is gone. Another recent article, this one in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and I'll just read it, this is action taken by the Milwaukee City Council last year. And they passed an ordinance that barred city-authorized public charter schools from offering cash incentives to parents or community members who refer students for enrollment. The ordinance also recommends the city's lobbyists push for a statewide ban on the practice, which independent charter schools, private voucher schools, and even daycare centers have quietly used, in some cases for years, to boost enrollment numbers. The new city ordinance is in response to a well-advertised offer from Urban Day School this fall for $100 in cash to anyone who referred a student who enrolled in the school by the 3rd Friday in September. Urban Day School called the campaign "cost-effective" because it rewarded parents for doing what they might do anyway, talk up the school with family and friends. The Milwaukee Teachers Education Association Union called the practice "something else," bribery. No schools that are part of the Milwaukee Public Schools offer enrollment incentives. The University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, which also authorizes a number of public charter schools, launched an investigation into enrollment incentive offers after the Journal Sentinel pointed out that some of its schools engage in the practice as well. And I guess beyond that, I would point out that every school district in the state has money taken off the top of their state aids for voucher schools in Milwaukee and Racine. And I think this year, 1.8 million is what, Ellen? Now, what we are, our portion of paying for the charter schools in the Milwaukee area, 1.8 million, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, 1.8 million dollars.
For just...
Yes.
For Milwaukee schools, yeah.
For the charter schools in the Milwaukee and Racine area.
Just to be clear, that has nothing to do with the number of Green Bay students who took vouchers, which we think is maybe one?
Last year was, yeah, one or two, one.
One or two.
Verified one.
And then, one more thing, just interest, there is a grassroots coalition called No Vouchers, which was formed about two weeks ago in Merrill, that its members are working to stop the expansion of taxpayer vouchers for private schools in northeastern Wisconsin. The group founder Pam Kobelia said, quote, "Our group calculated that the cost of funding vouchers for private school students just in Merrill, Wausau, Green Bay, and Eau Claire could cost taxpayers at a minimum an additional $25.8 million every year." Parents of public school students and other concerned taxpayers can receive digital news and information about school vouchers by sending an email to their site, which is novouchers, capital N, capital V, at Cox.net. And that group is just a couple of weeks old, but they're working to alert the communities, particularly in those communities. And unless anyone has any questions, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mike. And next, we have district events. If there's anything board members would like to announce. You know, Moe King did a great job telling us what's going on in high schools. I'm not aware of anything. Andrew?
We have Operation Snowball this coming weekend, and there is still room available for interested high school students. It's being held at Elder Leopold School. Hasn't been announced in some other years, because it was only a community nonprofit function, where now it is a school club in partnership with a nonprofit community organization. It's a leadership and drug alcohol prevention retreat for students. So, we're excited to have that be part of the district again. And, yeah, so, at Elder Leopold School this weekend, starting Friday.
Oh, Friday morning at 11:00 AM, Achieve Brown County is having its inaugural community briefing and celebration, where they will introduce their core investors, reflect on recent progress, and outline roadmap for the upcoming year. For those who don't know, Achieve Brown County is a multi-partner effort to amplify the impact of existing community organizations in support of Brown County's children. That's a very key group in our community. And we are an integral part of that group.
All right, thank you, Andrew and Mike. Next, we'll move to our teaching and learning report, and that will be facilitated by Mary.
Well, thank you, Brenda. We actually have no action items or discussion items to report, so with that, we can conclude.
All right, thank you. And next, we'll go to our organizational support, and that will be facilitated by Andrew Becter.
For business and finance, I have one action item. I moved that the offer to purchase the property located at 133 South Monroe Avenue for $215,000 is presented, be approved?
Second.
And again, that is the convent building that was used by the News Chronicle. And we would be looking to, again, purchase that property with the board's approval.
Any questions, Mike?
In reading over the document, it, what are, are we going to tear that building down and build onto the existing facility? Have we decided what we're doing with that building yet?
Michael is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason I asked, I talked about putting that building on the historic register, so I think we do that if we're going to tear it down.
The first option that we're going to look at is to repurpose the building. Because of the architecture of the building matches the school, we'd like to at least save the outside of the building and try to reconstruct the inside and then connect it to the school. But we're looking at the code issues right now.
But that would be your preferred?
That would be our preferred.
Option, which I'm happy to hear, just because of the aesthetics.
And we're talking about that for next fall?
We, you know, we haven't even started. I mean, once we purchase the building, we'll have to do some layouts and cost estimates.
I mean, once we've purchased the building, we'll have to do some layouts and cost estimates, and then we'll have to come back to you and determine on how we can budget for the project.
There are people waiting, children waiting.
Yeah. Waiting list.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. We have a motion on the table, Sandy?
Warren.
Ayes.
Franz. Aye. Jeffrey? Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0. Thank you, Mike. Oh, and thank you, Alan.
Okay. Under human resources, we have several items. Under action items, first, I move that the third-party contract health and social services personnel policy and rule as presented be approved.
Second.
Since the board looked at this, there has not been any changes. And again, this is a new policy that would allow us to follow protocol when we have third-party health or social services personnel that come in to work with our students.
Sandy? Lecker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 1.0 FTE Head Start Director position, 12 months at salary group 10, and the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
This is a new job description, but it contains some of the things that our current Head Start person Sally Johnson's been doing, plus some other additional responsibilities that she's going to be assuming, should the board approve her appointment with the next motion. This becomes a director-level position and adds another administrative position, which is something that we feel we need in Head Start programs typically.
Any questions? We talked about this last two weeks ago, so... Go ahead, Sandy. Becker?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0. Congratulations, Sally.
That's next.
Oh, sorry.
That's next.
Ahead of myself.
That's all that's...
I move that the employment of Sarah Johnson as Head Start Director at the Head Start... Did I skip them?
No.
You're good.
At 12 months, salary group nine, prorated effective October 21st, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye. Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0. Congratulations now.
I move that the transfer of Mary McCabe, Director of Preschool Programs, 12 months at Frabel, to Principal/Director of Preschool Programs, 12 months at Frabel Garden of Early Learning, as presented be approved.
Second.
This is recognized as additional work that Mary's assumed because of the growth of her student population and the fact that she now has a school where her students attend, and it moves her to the same level as all other elementary programs.
And how many satellites do you have responsibility for, Mary?
Eight.
Eight satellites, and then the Frabel School as well.
How many students do you have in your school now?
Just under 200.
All right. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Franz? Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0. Congratulations, Mary.
I move that the change in employee handbook as presented be approved.
Second.
This change is requested of the board because we've learned that not allowing educators to grieve a non-renewal is ruled in violation of a statute, and when we knew this, we immediately brought it to the board. Non-renewals could be viewed as a disciplinary measure. That is not necessarily how we would view them, but in some places, they could be, so we would allow employees to grieve a non-renewal. Our grievance process doesn't prohibit it. It was this sentence that did, and so we're asking that it be renewed from the handbook.
Any questions? Sandy? Lecker?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
And I move the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
Sandy?
Jeffrey? Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carrie 7-0. Seven, sorry. Five-0. And that concludes your report?
Yes.
Andrew? All right. And we do have a closed session, so I'll read that motion. Special Board Meeting Closed Session has been scheduled for Monday, October 20th, immediately following the adjournment of the regular board meeting. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment from motion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(f), considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-e, deliberating or negotiating or purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit employee compensation. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-g, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board, by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved to wit potential litigation matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
So moved. Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Franz? Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0. We will meet across the hall.